...liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending our June 5th Select Board meeting. Our town manager is going to be wow, the whole thing just went blank. Nope, it's back again. Our town manager, Julie Hans, will be attending via Zoom. She's had the misfortune of testing positive for COVID. She says she's fine. She sounds a little hoarse, but hopefully it's going to be a mild case and she gets through it. But she'll be with us through Zoom. First item on our agenda is any changes to the agenda. Does anybody have anything on changes?
I have none.
Nope, good. Next item is to approve our minutes from our May 1st Select Board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 1st, 2024 Select Board meeting minutes.
Second?
Lee's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything on the minutes?
Just had a couple of comments during a discussion regarding the nuisance ordinance. The name of the road is listed as Potash Road. Or, yeah, Potash Road, it's actually Potash Brook Road. And that occurs in several locations.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is what you're seeing or not, Lee, but I know several residents referred to Potash. And I do see that on line 41, it is listed as Potash Brook Road, so.
Yeah, I saw that as well. I don't know if we are doing a verbatim transcript or we're listing the road. It's technically Potash Brook Road.
Yes. Yeah, we'll put it in there just to have it. Thanks, Cap. Anything else on the minutes?
A couple of minor ones.
Go for it.
Page four, line 41, Richard Poston. The name is P-O-S-T-O-N. Dick's name is Poston. Not I-N, as it's spelled there, which is an understandable spelling. Page seven, line 12. It's, I'm not sure what I said here, because my memory's not that great, I freely admit it. But it says, "Tim had no idea the was as severe." I want to say, "The issue was as severe as people were saying," maybe?
Yeah, that sounds familiar.
I think that was all I had.
So while we're talking about spelling people's names, Jareen Slivinsky's name is spelled incorrectly. It should be S-L-I-V-I-N-S-K-Y instead of O-V-I-N-S-K-Y.
We do that a lot with our name. We want to apologize.
Yeah, I don't see her on there today, but.
Yep.
I mean, it's not an easy name to spell, like mine gets misspelled quite frequently. More often mispronounced, but.
Anybody with anything else? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there's someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Just come up to the mic and state your name.
Good evening, Paul Bidgood.
You can get that thing to go up.
Feel free to adjust that.
Good evening again, Paul Bidgood, Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to get an update on the Bailey Hill road matter.
Yep. I personally don't have any other information other than what we've discussed in the past. Julie, do you have any further information on any of the Class 4 road that Mr. Bidgood is speaking about?
I don't. I was hoping to have something tonight, Paul, for an update. I did leave a message for Jim. I do know that he has been out, but I do know he's back this week. I have not heard back from him, but I will make sure to follow up to find out where he's at with it.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And we'll make sure that when we have more information, we will notify you that you do not miss the meeting, because I know you're very concerned about this.
What I'd like to request is that perhaps Jim, the attorney, would supply his opinion, you know, within two weeks to support the next Select Board meeting. That would be my request.
You would like him to do what, sir?
Submit. He's had it for about six months now. And I'd like to, it seems like it's drifting on, I'd like some certainty that, you know, six months seems like a long time to review this. And if we could get it within two weeks to support the next board meeting, I think that's very reasonable. We've had so much time to look at it.
Yep. We will do our best and we'll notify you of the outcome of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else for citizens' comments?
Yes, hello?
Gene, Sarnicki?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Sarnicki.
I'm not sure if it's relevant or when you question of short-term rentals. But I have a question about something that may or may not be in the new ordinance.
Gene, you said it's regarding short-term rentals?
Yes.
So that is an item on the agenda, and we will be speaking to that later on in the meeting. And that would be the time that would be appropriate to bring that up.
Okay, I'll do it then. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' comments? We'll move on to old business, and Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. Just, I wanted to give everybody a quick update on the solar field. We are working with Greenbacker. I finally have Jim's review of renovations to the, not disclosure agreement that they're asking me to sign. I think we've reached a settlement there, so it's a document that I can actually sign. Municipalities, as we all know, are subject to open records laws, so I cannot just arbitrarily sign an NDA. So it has been modified. We're just waiting on Jim to give the final blessing, and then I should be signing that hopefully this week. Once the NDA has been signed, they will give us access to their whole suite of documents. And we can, at that point, begin conversations and potentially draft a purchase and sale. But conversation can really start at that point. So once that is signed, I'll be in touch to let you know where we're at.
A question on that, Julie, real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
So just can you give us an idea what the parameters of the NDA are? It seems confusing to me.
Yeah, so the NDA, so there's a lot of documents that they're considering confidential to their business. And, which is completely understandable, that they're a private company. So they don't want all of the inner workings of their business to be open to the public. However, municipality has opened records laws, so very few things are eligible for confidentiality in our case. So the NDA, which I'm happy to share with you guys if you would like before I sign it, I'm fine to do that. The NDA just makes that clear, that if a public records request comes to the town, I can't refuse. There is a process that we can go through and have any documentation requested redacted in accordance with open meeting or open record laws. But it's just, there's language been added to the NDA to state that I can't refuse a request if one should come in. And their legal department apparently understands that and has accepted that response. So that's where we're at.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Grants, I wanted to let everybody know that we were awarded the Downtown Transportation Grant for $200,000. This is the renovations or the review of the green that will electrify the green. It will create an access path from Cobbly up to the green. It will create an access path from the green back to Brookside Trail. It will create the bulbs out to do some, bulb outs to do some traffic calming at the sidewalk crossings. And if money allows within that, we're hoping to redo some of the curbing around the green, as well as painted delineating lines as you come down Common Street to kind of better mark where pedestrians travel versus the traffic. So we have been awarded that grant, which is exciting. It'll be good work. We will be going back to SE Group to have them do a community process so that there are a few meetings where a community can have input onto the changes that we would be proposing to the green. Again, it would not be anything that would disrupt what people are used to on the green. They would just simply be enhancements and some traffic calming measures on the green as well. So that was a brand-new award, which we were happy to get. And then, just the summer schedule, I just wanted to let people know I will be out July 17th. So in my planning of the June 19th meeting and the July 3rd meeting, I just am trying to have in my mind, if you guys are going to meet on the 17th, then I'll try to get a packet ready before I leave. I am gone from the 4th to the 19th. I'll be back in the office on the 22nd. So I just need to figure that out, if you want to have that second meeting in July, or if you're okay to bag that meeting and we'll just have one in July and then resume in August.
How does the board feel about that? I mean, it's hard to judge sometimes because things come up and then we have to address them. But if our schedule is light and there's not much going on, I wouldn't see a problem with that at all, Julie.
Okay, and I will be monitoring email. It's hard for me not to, in my position. So I will be monitoring email. If it does look like there is something that has to be addressed, then Arnie, I will just get ahold of you and let you know that.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have for old business.
Anybody else on anything on old business?
I have nothing.
Nope.
No.
I just have a quick update. The CCC did meet the other day. We were going to have a meeting over at the Adamses on the property down on Adams Road there. But it was postponed or canceled out, I'm not sure. But we will be meeting hopefully with the folks in that area of town in the future. We also had a short discussion on some Class 4 roads, other Class 4 roads as far as the other ones that are in town. And at the next meeting, we're going to try to determine which ones we would like to address specifically with a small project as, something like a small pilot project to make it happen on one road, to get the word out there and as an example on how it would work. And it would probably be one of the roads that there's a little less controversy on, and that's a little more obvious on where it is and it's accepted. So it would be a good way to introduce it to the community and to see how it's tackled and how we address it. And of course, before anything happens with that, it will come back to the board for a discussion, because the board is the final decision on anything. The Chester Conservation Committee is more helping and a guidance organization with us because of what they do and what they're involved with, and that's what they've been handling over the years with our trails and issues and things like that. So that'll be coming up again also. Other than that, I don't, oh, there was one other quick thing. And Peter, I was going to put this on you. There was a question that came up regarding sidewalks, and it was regarding a study that was done by the state when the high school area, in front of the high school where the speed limits were lowered down. And they talked about a sidewalk project, a possibility of one that would extend from the high school back into town. And that is all state roads. And I know there's no answers or anything right now. But being a member of the TAC Committee, I was wondering if there was some research you could do there or just bring it up and talk. Just, you know, touch base with them and see. And for that matter, also, just as you see appropriate in the future, if anything comes up on the TAC Committee, to give us an update on it. If there's something that you think that we should be aware of and, you know. It's pretty easygoing there on the TAC Committee, but once in a while, there's some kind of projects that come up that need input from the town or some considerations.
What's the TAC Committee?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's part of the regional planning, and it's the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
That Peter is a member on, representing Chester, and it's all the area towns that get together and discuss transportation projects, bicycle paths, roadways, bridges, and they prioritize projects and talk about projects.
Yeah, our leader is Logan, who is a representative from Leadlaw.
Get right into that mic, Pete.
Yep. Logan is our, is the leader for, I forget Logan's last name, for regional planning. And he pretty much canceled all our meetings through the legislative season. So they came back and there's talk of money, but it hasn't been allocated. And the big project that's coming down from the state and the initiative that they're trying to do is they they want to have 100% safety with, 100% road safety. And it's, it's interesting, because in my mind, it makes everything subsequent to that. So a project that might not be sustainable, you do because it was safety, and then you just have a never-ending maintenance for it. And it's, that I think is the way they're headed for it.
That's a lofty goal, 100% safety.
Say what?
100% safety.
100%, yeah, that's no deaths. That's what they're going for, no deaths. So, you know, if, you know, that's their goal. But the thing is, when you start looking at it that way, and how much, you know, because now you're saying that the value of a human life is infinite, you can imagine what a designer can do with that.
Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, when it comes to the sidewalk to the high school, remember, we were awarded a grant last year for the scoping study?
Yep.
So we're out to bid on that now. Bids are due the end of the month. So that engineering work for that scoping study will be beginning soon. And there'll be community meetings around that too, Arnie, just so that we remember that work is already being done.
Yeah, I remember that grant, but the question that came up is because it is a state highway, how are we involved with this grant and the state? Is it a, do we work together, or is it just our project, or is it just the state or a combination?
It's a town project, and what would happen is the state of Vermont would give us right-of-way clearance to construct a municipal structure within the state right-of-way. So during the scoping study process, that's a big part of the discussion, is conversations with the state to see if they're going to allow us to do that. That's one of the incongruences we need to look at, to see if we can overcome.
Yeah, I would hope they would allow us and help us along with the cost on something like that, considering it is a state road.
Yeah, I would think so. But we start with the scoping study, so that'll be starting soon.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Any other old business? Next item on our agenda is our nuisance ordinance. I believe this was something that was helped out with from VLCT, and it's a little more in line with what I think it would work in Chester as opposed to the Berry one that we had that was included turtles, reptiles, amphibians, and just about every creature on earth that could possibly be a nuisance in this world. Whereas this one seems a little more directed at items that make sense and fit more towards Chester.
Considering it's 10% of the length of the other one, I think that goes a long way to
Sometimes simpler is better.
Yeah, Occam's razor.
And this one, I think it definitely is that way. We can go over it quickly. Section 1, the authority, section 2 being the purpose, section 3 being the definitions. If anybody has any questions or concerns about any of those three first sections?
Section 3B, there are a lot of people who have strange domestic pets.
Beyond dogs, cats, and ferrets?
Right, yeah. I mean, you start talking about snakes, reptiles, you know. If you start having, I mean, I live next to a guy who had pet parrots, and you have no idea. You know, but then, that's my comments on that one.
So
So
A question about expanding that definition to include?
Well, just IE, just don't say, because here you cut the definition of dogs, domestic cats, and ferrets.
So inserting something like, domestic pet means any animal such as domestic dogs, cats, ferrets, et cetera?
It could even say something like primarily domiciled within the home or something.
Yeah.
Yep.
So expand that definition.
So make it so it could be a little more inclusive as opposed to just what's listed there.
Do we want to go through this section by section, or just person by person, or?
Well, I'm going to, we're starting section by section. Right now, we're on the definition, so then we'll head down to
We skip purpose.
Yeah, well, if there's a question or a concern about purpose, yeah, sure.
So their ability to produce noise detrimental to the enjoyment of life, property, and the conduct of business, and the risk they pose transmitting communicable diseases. I struggle with that statement because farm animals are noisy. And if we're talking about in-the-village limits, maybe that's different. But if you're out in rural Chester, to put a limit on a rooster crowing in the morning or to make that something that could be reported to the police, it's not going to work. And I also wonder about the risk of posing transmitting, pose of transmitting communicable diseases. In my experience, and I'm not a farmer, maybe others can speak to this more clearly, most people who live on farms are pretty healthy people.
It's more of a generalized purpose. I mean, there are, it's, I guess you can interpret it different ways and look at it different ways. But I think when you come down to the prohibitive nuisances, are going to be a little more specific about it, because you're not going to be able to enforce anything just by the purpose part of it.
Well, I just, I think that premise is just out of line. That's what I'm saying. I just can't get my head around that sentence.
And which specific sentence is it again, Tim?
Part of the sentence, "Their ability to produce noise detrimental to the enjoyment of life, property, and the conduct of business, and the risk they pose of transmitting communicable diseases to people or other animals." When
I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
When not properly confined.
Go ahead, Julie.
The key there is the not properly confined. So, I have a classic example. While I'm trying to figure out how to deal with the goats on Andover Road, one of the things that I have learned is that a lot of places will not take those goats because they carry a certain disease. They have been tested, and they actually carry two diseases. And if they're brought onto somebody's current farm, they're going to infect their entire livestock. So that would be one of those communicable diseases that that is talking about. So if they get off their property and happen to go onto somebody else's property, they could transmit that certain disease that is carried by the goat. So I think that that's what that's referring to, Tim, if that helps.
Okay, maybe I'm just playing devil's advocate then. Thinking about a rooster would be a common noise-producing animal that could be detrimental to the enjoyment of life, property. I mean, if somebody's going to complain about roosters crowing.
Well, if you look at section 4A, nuisance 1, disturbing the peace, it says, "Making noise for a continuous period of 30 minutes or more." So while I agree with you, and what I was looking for when you were talking was, does this apply specifically to the entirety of Chester or the village area, whatever? And I think that's where the clarification should come in, that if you have a rooster and you live in town, that's going to be different than me having a rooster, where, you know, I'm not going to disturb anybody.
Perfect, that's where I was going.
And there's an exemption right there.
So it'll help, I think, when we get to the nuisances themselves that specify and talk about the noise and whatever they do, that it'll be, it'll help clarify the statements that are in that purpose partly.
And just to be clear, we're not voting on this tonight. We're just having a discussion. So I think this is the opportune time to bring up any concerns like you just did, Tim.
Agreed.
Anything else on, so that, we had domestic pet, oh, on purpose still. Are we okay with the purpose then?
Well, I'm in agreement with Tim that I think we need to think about this a little bit more and see if there's something, and I'm blaming myself because I didn't spend as much time as I should have probably reading this and digesting all of it. But it seems like, at this point, in my understanding of this document, that purpose statement may be a little bit overzealous. But I think as we go through it, my opinion may change a little bit. Or we could tweak it to make it less onerous, because Ariana just mentioned an exemption, and there's some other things in here that could help.
I would suggest that we go through the whole document, and then the last thing we do is the purpose. The purpose is an aspirational statement regardless. It is not a judicial or something we enforce. It's just to say, this is what we're talking about. So if we go through everything and then go back, because it's, I mean, if you look at it, it says, "To promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens." If we're going to try and define that, then we're going to be here for days and days and days. So it's really, let's look at what the document is and then ask ourselves, what is the purpose of the document? And then fill in that piece.
All right. Hugh Quinn, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, because I don't have the document in front of me. But I guess I just wanted to know whether this is addressing honorary nuisances related to animals, or is it other kinds of nuisances, like nuisances that people would create? I just wasn't sure. Thanks.
This one seems like it's going to be more specific for animals.
Domestic animals.
The intention is regarding
Yeah.
animals.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll get to the prohibited nuisances. Anything else on the definitions? I know domestic pet, we talked about.
Down I, so it's the last one, you have, running at large means a domestic animal that is not in electric containment. A lot of people have electric dog fences now. And this is, right now, if you had your dog in an electric containment, your animal, your dog would be running at large.
So we should include maybe some clarification that an electric fence would suit
Well, no, it says on the premises of its owner. It's not on the premises of its owner. The electric dog fence would be on the premises of the owner, right?
Well, no, running at large means a domestic that is not on the premises owner, one, on the premises of another person or provision, being on a lead or animal-to-animal control or electronic containment. I know people who have hunting dogs. When you hunt a bear dog, it's got an electric collar on it.
But it's not an in-bed fence. It's a
Do you have the collar, plus you have an in-bed fence, so you, electric containment?
Well, that brings up another point, though. Item 2 there, not on, okay, never mind, I misread that. So you're thinking that dogs with electronic
Containment are not running at large.
Are not running at large.
Are not running at large.
So you're not talking about an invisible fence, but you're talking about shock collar, something
Collar, something like that, right.
Same idea, kind of. It's an electronic means of containment.
I mean, it could be included in, under the owner's physical control, depending on interpretation. But the fact that it's up for interpretation, I guess, is the question.
Under the owner's control, because I use GPS collars on my dogs. And if they're trained, they're very useful.
Right.
But you could just put one on and say, oh, it's under electronic containment, and the dogs run wild, too. So I think if we're going to include something like that, it would have to be very carefully worded.
But if it had all those, if it had the collar and it had the, or whatever means it had, that means it's being contained on the premise of the owner.
Some people still don't want bear dogs or
Yeah, no.
other hunting dogs running across their property.
Right.
Some people don't want to do what?
Don't want hunting dogs on their property, so I
Yeah, that's, that's a whole can of worms with a state that's been going on for a while.
I mean, I hear you, but I'm not sure how we get there.
I don't know about that one.
Can we go back to A for a second?
Sure.
So A doesn't have an et cetera, or it just says cattle, sheep, goats, blah, blah. And it leaves out a whole bunch of stuff. So somebody mentioned snakes. I don't see snakes anywhere in this.
Or any other animal kept as a pet, or? Or any other animal kept as a pet, or-
Right, and that, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, is that we change that to be less exclusive, I guess.
So be more inclusive.
Yeah, more inclusive.
Back to turtles, reptiles, snakes, and everything.
Well, I don't know that we need to even list all of this stuff. I think if we define what a domestic animal is by its, not, its type of animal, but by its purpose or use-
Under the control of a person.
Right.
Or supposedly under the control.
I can't even pronounce some of the birds I've got on.
Yeah. I mean, under the control might be a little difficult, because anybody who's ever tried to herd pigs is probably aware that it's not easy.
But some kind of word to make it more inclusive.
Right, yeah.
Some kind of statement to it. Anything else on definitions?
Maybe you change that to domesticated animal, because you've got a domestic pet, which is a different category.
And then a domesticated animal.
Yeah.
Right.
And the same thing for B, or other domestic pet.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you also have A, which is domestic animal, and then B is a domestic pet.
Right, right. Peter's saying it should be domesticated animal for A, because they're more like-
Oh, okay, I messed that up, okay.
Yep, there you go.
Anything else on definitions? Enforcement officer, impoundment, impoundment expenses, lead. They, that's interesting that they define lead, but maybe that's where it should be defining with that collar you were talking about.
I was just thinking, maybe that's where an electronic collar-
Electronic means of control.
You know, anytime I mention electronic collar, I call it a training collar, because it's only, only useful for control if the animal, the dog's been trained properly.
Yeah, but you're only thinking of dogs. I have a friend of mine that, right now, her goats are running GPS, and she has no fence.
Cool.
But I mean, so there. And they're not on her property, because she rents the goats out.
So electrical containment.
So she can put a, she can put a boundary, set up a boundary, and that's pretty cool.
Right.
Same technology, but more automated.
Right.
So electrical or electronic containment.
So these are fainting goats, where they get too close to the line, they flop over?
That's why they faint. Never knew that.
Do you want to include anything else with lead, then, with the electronic parts of it, and try to include some electronic things?
Or electronic containment, I think that helped me, Peter, with the goat thing.
By the way, folks, I would be willing to volunteer to take the notes that we're doing and revise this document to resubmit to everybody, so I'm happy to continue to take those notes unless there's someone else who is logically responsible.
No, you've been, you're hired.
Do you not want me to modify the nuisance ordinance that I drafted for you, or are you disagreeing with the electoral number?
No, no, go right ahead.
Yes, please, Julie, I'm just taking extensive notes, and I'm happy to share those with you.
And I am as well, thank you.
Perfect.
We're trying to help you, Julie. We're trying to help ourselves by helping you.
Appreciate it, always. Excuse me, I think Gene had a question or comment.
What was that again?
Yes, I do. I'm just going to add another animal that people can be aware of is peacocks. Some people, they can get out of hand. I've seen something on TV once where some town resident had about 25 peacocks screaming all the time, all day long and night. Just mentioning that, that's all.
So if we're going to include all these other birds, we should include PFO.
Yep. We'll add it to the list, sir, thank you.
Well, it gets back to the idea that we should make sure it's inclusive of anything that might be coming up, that people have the possibility of turning into a nuisance one way or another.
We would have to add every animal on the planet.
Go, yeah.
So I think that-
We're going to find, we're going to find some language that's appropriate, that says includes but not comprehensive. So something that basically says it includes, but it doesn't mean by exclusion it's not here.
We have smart people working on this, we'll get it.
We'll come up with something.
I used to have guinea hens that wreaked havoc over at the Army Reserve Center. They'd go next door, they'd fly into the glass where the door was, and they would, they would attack their shadows and do their business on the floor there, and then seniors would come in and slip on the business. And the guinea hens ended up in someone's-
Most people only have guinea hens once in their life.
Yeah.
So did you get on F, something about electronic containment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Owner, that's easy enough, I guess. And we already hit running at large. And remedial action. Any other questions on Section 3 before we head on, or any ideas or thoughts? So Section 4, the prohibited nuisances. Nuisance number one, disturbing the peace.
So again, where I get stuck on this, A is around the location. Somebody has a farm, and I know there's some language in here somewhere, I forget where, about people who are defined as agricultural properties, but again, if somebody lives out in the rural parts of town, this is going to be a tough one, I think.
Do you still, do you feel that way once you read the exemption right there, which just says it does not apply to any person raising, feeding, or managing adult domesticated animals in the agricultural practices of a farm no less than four contiguous acres in size?
Also, does, I'll answer that question with a question. Does that mean that if someone is, has four acres, then they're exempt from this?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
No, you have to have a certain number of goats, you have to have a certain number of sheep, you have to have a certain number of horses in order to do that. It probably should refer to the state's definition.
Including that section.
Yep.
So there's definitions that would explain if it's a farm or can be classified as a farm?
Could it just be if you have four acres or more, or three acres or more, or some specific size? Can we just leave out the state regulation here?
Why don't I-
Because that might help with the rural and village aspect of it.
Since we don't have it to hand, why don't I find that definition and bring it back, and we'll include the full definition, and then we can explore how much of it we need in order to satisfy that. Because if it's just four acres, that could do it, but I'm guessing there's people raising aggressive chickens on a three-acre property, do we need to address that? So why don't I pull out that state?
Yeah, let's see what it says.
Sure.
And we can compare it.
I think part A speaks to that, because it's for a continuous period of 30 minutes or more. I've raised animals, and if you raise them well, they're not going to be making noise for 30, a happy animal is not going to be braying, or calling, or crowing for 30 minutes continuously. And so I think that kind of leads to the, the manner in which the animals are being treated, or raised, or held, because obviously, if you're trying to wean some kids from its mother, they're going to make a lot of noise, but it's not going to be a continuous situation for, you know, theoretically 30 minutes, without the owner saying, okay, we've got to do something about this. It seems to me that, while I agree with what we were talking about earlier, as far as location, and this part one being, tying into that, I think there's some good language here that says it's got to be continuous noise for 30 minutes or more.
It's interesting, because the next thing after that, the exemptions, talks about farms. And the definition in state statutes regarding a farm, no less than four acres, and raising, feeding, if that's their, their business of animals and stuff, so there is an exemption that's already specified in there.
Yep.
Kind of as a relief for somebody that actually makes a living doing it and stuff.
Right, and that would, that would speak to somebody in town that's on an acre, and, you know, has whatever animals. If they're making noise for 30 minutes or more, they're not exempt, and so there would be, you know, some repercussions relative to that disturbance. But if they're not-
I know the timeline of 30 minutes is also just a number that can be changed.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, so I heard Arianna say she's going to bring us the statute, so we can look at it. Let's just revisit that section. And see, and see, I just want to make sure it makes sense for rural versus village living.
I agree with you, Tim, on whether there's a huge difference on, in town and rural and stuff, but it doesn't mean that it, there can't be an issue in a rural situation.
Right.
You know, where animals are making noise, or having an issue with their neighbors. And the fact that they own more property, more than four acres, shouldn't exempt them, I don't think, from anything that's going on here.
I'm not suggesting it completely exempts them, but I think maybe there's some separate guidelines of some sort. I don't know, I just, this just seems a little onerous to me as I read it now.
Anything else on nuisance disturbing the peace at this time, before we get some more information on some of the state statutes on it and the farm stuff? And B, nuisance two, running at large?
In town. I noticed that it's specific to the town of Chester, which technically is the entire, however many square miles we are. I'm just wondering if that definition could be tweaked a little bit to-
Density.
Density, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Something like, yeah.
Or use our zoning categories.
As defined in the zoning bylaws, right?
Used to have a village.
Speak into the microphone, guys, so we can hear what's going on.
So I was just saying, using the zone, utilizing the zoning categories, so it would make sense, I think, to go back and reflect on those that are in the definitions, and apply whichever ones are appropriate.
Right, now it's back to the, you have the historical definition of a village from before.
Again, I want to be careful that we're, as we're considering this language, that we're focusing on the problem we're trying to fix, and not creating more problems by being overreaching.
Thank you.
Now, we have one problem that's come to us that we're trying to fix, not that there are another, no other ones, or maybe there's two, but the point is that I don't think we're in a position now where we need to highly regulate something that's not necessarily a problem.
Yeah, and yet, if we're going to regulate, it has to apply to everyone.
Yeah.
So-
Like a catch 22.
It has to apply fairly. And, you know, we have no tools now. And we had a pretty large crowd here at the last meeting that wants something done, so we can't ignore that. Hugh Quinn's got a question.
Hugh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the only feedback I have based on what I've heard so far is, just to be careful that, to try not to create a scenario that's sort of village-centric and rural-centric, because while it's true, the village area is much more compact and maybe more susceptible to these sort of problems. Whatever problem you think could exist in the village area could also exist in a rural area. So my, my comment is, be careful not to make this a village issue only, and ignore the rural side of it, because well, it may not happen as often, or there may be some different parameters that make it, you know, more acceptable in rural areas. Don't leave the rural areas out of consideration as you, as you guys move forward.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thanks. I just want to, I just was kind of processing where my head is on this, and I want to try to share it, is, we've all heard stories over time of somebody moves next to a farm, moves from a city, we'll say, moves next to a farm and starts complaining about the noise and the smell of the farm. Like, that's, that's the kind of thing that I want to make sure that we, we aren't infringing upon the rights of folks who are raising animals out in the country, where, to me, it's appropriate. Another example would be somebody moves within earshot of a shooting range, and now they want the shooting range shut down. Well, the shooting range has been there for 50, 60, 75 years. So what's the right way to handle that? And it's, it's a tough situation, but I think that helps to illustrate where my head is on this proposed ordinance.
Yeah, and that's why I brought up, what's the problem we're trying to fix?
And how do we do it without affecting, having negative repercussions or unintended consequences on an ordinance that all of a sudden the phone starts ringing, and everybody's complaining about everything that they could find on this list?
And if we're not careful, somebody who just doesn't like their neighbor now has a reason to call up on it.
But there still has to be an action, there still has to be an addressable issue before, I mean, you could make the calls, and you could make the statements, but without an actual event happening, or something that is disturbing, then it's going to be, yeah, well, you know, there's nothing we could do about it, because there really isn't an issue, but-
I'm not at all suggesting that we do nothing, I think we have to do something. I just want to be cautious.
So running at large, this is the last thing I said, uh, any ideas on that? Are we okay with the-
Well, it says in town, that's not-
Yeah, we're going to go back and figure out a better definition or phrase than just in town. Running at large is well-defined in the earlier definition section.
I think you just, you just take out in town.
Just take the in-town out?
Mm-hmm.
Because you've defined running at large.
Right.
Yep.
Failure to remove waste.
I have a comment on that. We need to be absolutely certain that whatever moves forward clearly defines that this is regarding the domesticated animals and not domestic pets. We are not going to provide an ordinance that allows people to complain about dogs in other yards. So we need, since we define both a domestic pet and a domesticated animal, when it comes to removing, failure to remove waste, we must be very clear that we are referring to the farm animals in that instance.
So can you clarify why?
I don't know that we want to be the town that gives an ordinance, so that if my dog poops on your yard, you can come and complain to the select board, unless that is what we are talking about creating an ordinance for, and then we're going to have much longer conversations.
Well, I, again, I'm, I'm looking-
The difference between a cow defecating in your driveway, and a dog defecating in your yard, I guess I'm trying to say there's one that feels-
But it-
Well, there's, there's other things, too, because even think about it. I take my horses down the road, down a dirt road, there's nobody on it, the horse poops.
Yep.
Guess what? You're telling me that I got to go back and clean it up. You're telling that there should not be horses on the road, pretty much is what you're saying.
I'm saying we can't do that. That's why I'm saying I have an issue with this, because I think there are way too many exceptions. There are far more exceptions than there are easily definable rules.
On this one, where we shouldn't be doing anything.
There's dropsy.
So I'm, I'm just trying to think about what this looks like. So relative to a domestic pet, you're saying that we don't want to regulate that?
Correct.
But for a domesticated animal, we do want to regulate it.
If 14 goats are going on somebody else's patio and defecating on their patio, then I think that's a worthy issue.
But, but they're running at large, so they couldn't do that if they weren't running at large.
So they've already-
So do we need to deal with the species?
There we go.
If they're already violating, you know, rule B?
That's a reasonable way to look at it.
Whether they defecate or not.
What do we do in the instance, and again, I'm not trying to create a problem, but what do we do in the instance where somebody is walking their dog on a leash, the dog stops at the bush, relieves itself, and the owner doesn't pick up the waste? Is that something that the- Is that something that the owner could complain about if it happens every day?
Well, yeah, but don't...
I don't wanna set a precedent where that is something that is taking our governance time.
Well, I, I agree with you. You know, less regulation is better, in my viewpoint. And I will always go back to common sense and just personal responsibility.
Yeah.
But if somebody comes to the point where they've talked to the owner multiple times and the owner's just blown them off, then what's their recourse, if any?
I see, um, there is no poop fairy signs. That seems to work.
Well, I, and again, I, I think that people should be responsible, but not everybody is responsible. So the question then becomes, if somebody were to experience this issue, what's their recourse? Would they call the police? Would they go talk to the town manager?
What's their recourse today?
What's that?
What's their recourse today?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know.
I don't.
I think there is anything.
I don't think there isn't one.
They talk to the dog owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you talk to the dog owner, and I'm not saying, like I said, I, I don't...
We, we have, we have a dog ordinance. And in the dog ordinance, under Section Seven, um, B, a dog that defecates in a public area or on private premises of another person whose owner does not immediately remove the fecal tear or dispose of it in a sanitary manner. Uh, this is what, what deans the nuisance. So you have a dog nuisance already. So why, why confuse the dog ordinance with what we're trying to deal with in large animals? Why not, you know, you kind of, you're going back to, you're trying to combine two things, and you have one that very specifically deals with dogs already?
Hmm.
So let's...
Leave dogs out of this.
Leave dogs out of it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, at least that, that failure to remove waste, because that's, it seems like that's the only one it's gonna really apply to. Because everything else, we kinda seem to agree that a horse going down the road or, or a farm animal or whatever, that's not, that shouldn't be part of the, uh, issue. But the defecating of a dog on someone else's property, if it's covered in the dog ordinance, and it sounds like we're okay with just dropping that.
A fifty-dollar fine and twenty-five-dollar waiver.
So there is a way for somebody to deal with that?
Yes.
Not necessarily in this?
Not necessarily.
Okay, and that's what, that's the piece I was missing. Okay.
Thanks for looking that up, Peter.
It's the curse.
So we're think, we're, we're thinking about leaving that one out then?
I would just take it out. Because if, if the, if the domestic animals are defecating on somebody else's property, they shouldn't be there to start with.
It's already running away, yeah. It's already got issues, whether it, uh...
How about D, nuisance four, damage to or interference with property of another?
My first comment on that is just that we would add something that says, this is not the exclusive list. This is not the exhaustive list, or whatever, but...
Yeah, the same thing, the, the caveat about that, it's, yeah. So that one stays pretty much with just a little clarifier on it?
See definitions.
Open, make it more open. Open-ended.
That's it for those nuisances, then?
Well, it already says including but not limited to, so I think we're good on that.
Oh, there we go. That's the words.
So I, I'm...
Thank you.
I'm good with that one.
Yep.
Anybody else think of any nuisance that's not included on here that we should consider? But like you said, Lee, uh, including but not limited covers it all as far as what they could do.
You know, I wonder if, this, I'm just thinking out loud, so this may make no sense. Feel free to say so. Um, what if a, a farm animal walks into traffic, gets hit by a car, and causes damage to the vehicle? Is that something that we should include here?
No, it's already addressed. Like, they just did it with the bull up in, um, Bridgewater. Yeah, it happened in Bridgewater.
So there's a state statute that covers that?
Lawyers won. The people who hit the bull got lots of money.
But is there a statute that covers it, or just legal precedents?
Hmm, I wouldn't, I'd have to look at the case, but I know that, yeah.
I think that your example would be covered under this, where it says cause, cause it's damage to real or personal property.
Yep.
So to me, that includes, if somebody hits your animal 'cause it's running at large, then that's interference or damage to property of another. Okay.
Yeah, that's, there's, that's... Pretty all-encompassing, uh, the D on that, as far as damage goes and what it can or can't do, and what happens or doesn't happen. Enforcement. Uh... It's a civil matter, and it explains how it works with the Vermont Judicial Bureau or the Windsor County Superior Court at the election. Wow. Thanks, Kath. Uh, the violations and the provisions of state statute that give us the, uh, authority to have these penalties and costs and how they work. And then we get to the penalties and cost, which is basically describing what we want the fi, the fines to be and the waiver fees for all the nuisances. Uh, nuisance one, nuisance two, three, and four. And first, second, and third offense for each. Any ideas, opinions, or thoughts on enforcement or penalties and costs?
I would like to ask, Julie, do these numbers come from, uh, VLCT or other towns? Or are these based on some evaluation of our own?
These are based on what it would cost us to have a, a staff member actually do this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that's helpful. That, that makes, makes sense, then.
So with that, I think these are fine.
For the penalties and costs?
Nope, no penalty.
All good?
Yes. Fines are fine.
Fines are fine. Empoundment, that was the one that was an issue when this first came up, because no matter what we had for ordinances or statutes with the state, we didn't have any means of impoundment. We didn't have any vehicle to make that happen, or a way to make that happen. And I would think that would still be a big part of this, to make sure that that is in place or something that we have a resource to use for impoundment and the process that goes with it before any of this could become, uh, viable. Julie, do we have a, any ideas on the impoundment part of it? Have we talked to any farmers or any people that are in this part, uh, line of work?
My dogs are gonna go crazy in just one second, 'cause Jeff is pulling in. Um, the impoundment piece, if you're talking about farm animals, then it's just gonna be on a case-by-case basis, because we don't, um, we, the town does not have a farm that we have an arrangement with. It's gonna depend on the type of animal. Like, the goats are an example. I'm having a very hard time finding a place that I double-take the goats to impound them.
Yeah.
So it's one thing to have the ordinance, the enforcement, and the actual putting that into practice is going to be on a case-by-case basis if we're dealing with farm animals.
So Julie, should we add any language in this document that says impoundment costs will be based on town costs for...
Actual cost.
Could be levied against the owner at the actual cost?
Something along those lines.
Yes, I thought there was language in here about that, but let me, um, let me read that again real quick.
Haven't come across it.
Yeah, on excess auction proceeds, they talk about, uh...
Is language under D released from impoundment?
Yep.
Yeah, the expenses for the impoundment and the feeding and all that. So there is, there is some language in there.
Uh, seven D.
Okay.
And they reiterate later about public auction part, that even the monies that might be, uh, garnered from a public auction would go to, towards paying for the fees and the impoundment and stuff. If, if it gets that far, that seems that the person that owns the animals isn't gonna be doing anything and not gonna want them back, so we're trying to recoup our fees through an auction.
Right, and that's exactly what I was thinking about, is, you know, this could be a convenient way of getting rid of, uh, you know, four hundred cats or whatever.
Yeah. I don't know if they'd get a lot of money at auction for four hundred cats.
Not in this country.
No. So any other concerns or questions regarding Section Seven on the impoundment?
I'm, I'm just curious about, I'm not sure how to interpret on F. Says the balance, if any, will be paid to the treasurer of the town in which the animal was impounded, to the use of the owner if demanded within one year, otherwise to the use of the town. So the owner could come back and ask for the money?
Excess, excess money, so after all costs were deducted.
Okay.
Oh, if there's any leftover after that. So the town would hold on to it for a year, and that person has a right to claim it?
Yep.
All right, I got it. Thank you. I knew there was something there that I just wasn't catching.
Any other questions? And Section Eight is just regarding, uh, that the ordinance is addition to all other ordinances of the town of Chester and applicable to the laws of the state of Vermont. And survivability is that if they find one section of it that's not legal, that doesn't make the whole document illegal. I think that was a decent run-through on the first shot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Julie, for coming up with this.
Yep.
I can't imagine if we had gone through the one we had last time, that was about thirty pages. It would've been, I think, a different story, for sure. Anything else anybody wanna talk about as far as this ordinance goes? Any other questions, comments, or concerns before we move on?
Not right now.
Sorry, Ariana, you took some notes, and I thought Julie took some notes, and you'll get together and...
Yep.
Do your thing. Next item on our agenda is short-term rental ordinance. And I think everybody in their packet has the last version of our short-term rental. I don't know if you wanna go through this section by section or just basically take a look at the whole document as a whole, because I think we've been through most of it, uh, a, a number of times. It's been changed over the course of the last five or six months quite a bit. Most of it because of, uh, legal concerns by our town council as trying not to instigate a lawsuit because of some things that might be in there. So it is definitely not watered down, but it has changed a little bit over the, over the time of five or six months to be more fair, more equitable to whether it's a owner-occupied short-term rental or whether it's, uh, off-premise short-term rental. The only one concern that I remember seeing in here was that the lawyers still recommended a radius as opposed to two counties to avoid that Commerce Act or something regarding that. But that opened up a whole different can of worms as far as enforcement. So I thought that the, the last time we talked about it, the board was more in agreement to just go with the two counties and keep it like that because of, uh, us being able to enforce this. As, once we cross the state lines, it changes a lot of things going into New Hampshire. Any ideas, uh, any comments or concerns or questions?
I have a couple of questions and one typo. I know Jim's email mentioned a typo, so maybe it's already been corrected. Um, let's start, start with that. Section Five A, the last line there says transfer o, ownership, and obviously that should be of ownership.
Yeah, so I don't, did you get the email Julie sent out?
I did.
'Cause that, I'm looking at the...
Oh, there was another copy?
Yeah, the copy that came out today.
I didn't download it. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong one, then. Somebody else go while I find the right one.
Yeah, Julie sent it, uh, at nine forty-eight this morning.
I saw the email, but I didn't see the attachment.
Okay.
And that was regarding the one year? Is that, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it. I just opened the email when I came in from the barn, so... And he's got, there's a, there's a fair amount of red ink in here.
That red ink is not all new, Peter. This is still your marked-up version from your meeting originally, that you guys had, uh, made some changes. Preston made those changes.
Yep.
Put it into trap changes, sent your changes then to Jim.
Sent to Jim.
And Jim's email back just pointed out a couple of things, but other than that...
That's it.
This document is the same version that you guys looked at last time with Preston's markups, based on your conversations.
Okay, so Julie, could you give us a little insight, if you have any, as to Jim's concern with counties rather than some radius?
I, I'm not, my, my legal knowledge can't keep up with him on this particular topic. It has something to do with the, the Interstate, the Commerce Act. And, um, there was, my understanding is that there is a Supreme Court case that had to do with short-term rentals and limiting, um, limiting, uh, access to short-term rentals out of state. And it had something to do with the Interstate Commerce Act. And I, beyond that, I don't really know. I can certainly have him write up something a little more descriptive, um, to explain it, if that is helpful. Um, but he does keep bringing that up, and I think it's because there was a recent Supreme Court decision on that.
'Cause he says in his email, um, rather than counties, is to further undermine a commerce clause challenge. But I think much has been accomplished on that front by making Section Five requirements uniformly applicable.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if, if what we have now, as the document stands now, whether he feels that it's sufficiently, um, written so that it's not gonna open us up to some kind of a lawsuit?
It may. If he's saying, if he's saying, let me pull up his email. It's hard to do from my laptop. Um, if he is saying that he feels Number Five resolves that issue, then I would say we're fine. Oh, shit.
And, and those are, it is council's opinion. It not necessarily, I mean, it, it's wise usually to follow it, but because this is uncharted territory for a lot of towns and a lot of issues that are coming up over the state and over the country, too, there's always a chance that it's gonna get challenged on, on one area or another area. And he, he has brought up that Commerce Act, and which is why the, uh, short-term rental was adjusted in, in a lot of different ways to make sure that that wasn't coming into play. But the fact that we went with the counties as opposed to the radius had something to do with crossing the lines of the state into New Hampshire, and which is why it would still apply, or it would still be relevant that someone would be able to challenge it, even though they were just across the border into New Hampshire.
But, I mean, he does say that with the changes that were made in Five, it sounds to me like he's comfortable with what you're proposing.
Right, and that's, that's what I wanted, it's your, your insight on that, 'cause that's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then he also says that last paragraph, "There's a case currently pending in the E Court which challenges the validity of Burlington's STR ordinance based on a theory that its regulations constitute a taking of previously unregulated, pre-existing established STR use." So I don't know if that's the same, the same idea that's being challenged or is totally different, but I, I think that I'm more comfortable sticking with the two counties rather than trying to come up with some arbitrary radius that doesn't necessarily help us out.
Yeah, I don't, I think his con, his com, his comment about the constitutional taking concern, I mean, that's just in general. I think every state across the country is looking at the, you know, potential lawsuits of that, because it's a change in regulating how people use their personal property. And so there's always gonna be a potential of that. So I don't think he's connecting that to the issue with commerce. I think that's something completely different.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So all in all, we're basically okay with this as far as the new revised short-term rental ordinance is?
Well, I'm back to my two questions now that I have the right copy downloaded, and, and seems like the only change was the typo had been fixed. Uh, let me see where I am now. C eight.
Where are you, Tim?
What section?
Sections, oh, sorry. Section, oh, sorry, Section 4, C8.
Proof?
Proof satisfactory to the town. My question is, does that need to be better defined, or is that something that is normal legal language that will decide as appropriate what proof is satisfactory?
I think that's up to the town to decide.
That's what it's saying, and I just, is that legally, is that leaving an opening for somebody to challenge or not?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's kind of picky, but that's where my head is, so...
Preston, are you comfortable with 8, with the language of 8 in enforcing that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, the problem with stating every item that they have to get from some other entity or something, we have to provide copies is, I don't know, just proof satisfactory gives us a little more flexibility, I think.
Aren't you going to? Aren't you going to have to define though, what, what is satisfactory proof, anyway?
You're muted, Julie.
Yeah.
I guess this way you can...
I mean, so far, what we're looking for with proof is Division of Fire Safety primarily. So, I, I think of that as kind of a a bigger category that just is there in case there's other things that come up.
So, it gives you some wiggle room, is what you're saying?
I, I think that's what I would say.
Okay.
We've already described in some detail what kind of proof they have to provide for their Division of Fire Safety, and then we're saying, you know, then we have this catch-all. I think that's the best I can describe it.
So, you'll have your list when they apply, and then if it needs to change later, you can...
Well, I think it's like, there's always somebody that does something that we don't expect, put it that way.
That's what I was going to say, is that what may be required for each property may be slightly different, just like if somebody brings in a zoning application to Preston. Depending on what it is, sometimes something further is required. But for every application, the same thing isn't always required, so it's the same thing, it's just a catch-all.
Okay.
And, and we do have two different sets of requirements, whether it's under 8 or over 8, and over 8 it gets a little more stringent, and it, it does involve the State of Vermont Department of Health and Safety, whereas otherwise it's self-assure, asserting on the ones that are below it. So, that little wiggle room or that little the line that gives the town satisfactory, that the town gives us a little option as far as...
So, here's another thought on this, though. I think we need to be careful that the list of requirements is the same for everybody who's in the same category, lest someone think favorites may be played. Does that make sense?
That's what I was thinking about, is how does somebody know they've met the requirements if the goalpost keeps moving?
Yeah, did my neighbor meet the same requirements that I meet, that I did?
To Julie and Preston's point, everything, every situation is going to be different.
But the applications have the requirements on it, don't they, as far as what, what they expect out of the...
That actually opens another question. I asked that the application be reviewed by Jim, and I don't know if that happens?
It has. I'm not sure, though. Julie, has it? I mean, we'd...
I believe the application was sent to Jim, you know, he responded back just on the, on the ordinance. He did not respond back on the application, so we can reach back out to him. Preston, did you hear anything directly on the application itself?
He did respond on the application, yes. And he did provide some suggestions of things that he wanted to change on the application. I didn't share it with you all. But I don't, I don't, I don't think they are that big a deal, best I can say. You know, getting back to this section, it, it does talk about Department of Health, Division of Fire Safety, Department of Taxes. Right now, we do want, you know, them to comply with Division of Fire Safety, and that's something that we fairly actively... I mean, we have inspectors from the division contacting us and us contacting them to make sure that there aren't any gaps and people are covered. Division of Taxes is mostly covered because all of your host platforms have a deal with the tax department to just handle that directly, and so we, it's in our, in our ordinance, but we really don't have to deal with it. And then Division of Health has to do with if they are serving food, or if they, and things like that, which mostly people who did that go the route of being a lodging establishment and get a separate approval, so I think of it as a catch-all clause more than a more than anything else.
As, as long as everybody's, as long as it's a level playing field, that's great, and the way, what I'm hearing is that if we needed to add something or take something away later, it gives you the ability to do that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The other vagarity, I guess if you will, in my mind, is Section 9. About halfway through the paragraph under the table, it says, "Failure to timely pay a penalty upon entry of judgment." Should, I think I actually asked this question before, should there be an actual time limit there? Or is that...
You know, Tim, I do, I do remember that you asked that question before, and I did put that question to Jim, and I never got an answer, so I I, it was, I highlighted it to Jim, and, and it just, it just never got an answer. That's all I can say.
Well, what are your thoughts?
This, this comes from a generic document. I didn't make the words up. Timely definitely means something to the court. I mean, if you clearly don't meet the deadlines set for an appeal for a zoning permit, you're not timely, and they just, I mean, you're one day late, you're done. You're, you're just all up. So, the courts know what timely means. So, I'm guessing that it just refers to the earlier deadlines. Just says you don't meet them, you don't meet them.
So, something like that, you could instead of a a time, a time, failure to timely pay, you could put failure to pay 60 days, 30 days, or whatever, if you want to be more specific.
Forty-five days, you know, pick a number that's fair and reasonable.
Um, you know, look, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to ask this question again, or to look a little more detail about just again, it's sort of boilerplate, but what is the timely referring to, and then just say, this is what timely is, yeah. So, I, I, I...
Well, do we need, do we need to go back to the attorney for this? It seems like a pretty easy change to make, and...
Yeah, you're asking if we need to, if I need to report back, or if you just can delegate it to be, I would like to think that I can figure this out, yeah.
Well, I, I was thinking that 30 days is typical or other negotiated timeline. Because we often do that with people who owe taxes and they can't pay it all at once. We negotiate some...
They have a legitimate reason.
Right, yeah. So, some wording like that might be applicable. 30 days theoretically should be enough for anybody to pay the fee or fine and whatever it is unless they can't, and then they come to the town and work something out.
Well, the other thing is to look, it does refer to a statute under 24 VSA 1981. I guess I just need to look that up. Cause it says timely pay of a penalty upon entry of a judgment under that statute.
So, there might be some language in there that specifies the process?
Well, it's probably, that statute probably says what timely is, and then they're just saying timely under that statute.
Well, if it's defined in there, I think we're covered, and if it's not...
Yeah. I'm not sure I can look it up like while we're talking, but I mean, that's what I would guess.
30 days.
It's 30 days.
You found it in the statute?
Yeah.
Some people have looked it up, okay.
That's our timely, 30 days.
Perfect.
Well, we can, we can, strictly, if you would feel more comfortable that uh, failure to timely pay a penalty, failure to pay a penalty...
Within 30 days?
Within 30 days upon entry, yeah.
I would just like to get, move this ahead tonight if everybody else is ready to do that.
I agree with you, Tim.
Okay, I'll write that note.
Anything else on the document in general or any specific part? I think we're almost there. I think with a few minor, minor tweaks that we talked about, we should be fine and have a final copy at our next meeting to sign. I would hope.
I have a couple of questions, sir.
Mr. Zarneski, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, could you just say what the rates are that, in the existing document for in-town and out-of-town?
Uh, they're hosted and unhosed, and Preston, you have that information?
Yes, it's, it's 150 for hosted and 300 for not hosted.
Okay, thank you. Earlier I had heard some, somebody say they were going to double it from 300 to 600, and that's what I want to understand.
Oh, you said currently, you, you're right, this document talks about doubling it to 600, that's correct.
Well, now, my question is, did the in-town or hosted way of doing it, did that get doubled from 150 to 300, or is it still at 150?
It's still at 150.
Still at 150.
That, that seems to be unfair to, if it gets doubled for the unhosed it, the hosted should be doubled also. From what I know, it was originally 150 to 300, now it should be 300 to 600. Is what I'm thinking.
It wasn't law, though, it was a proposal, so the, the doubling was just a rethinking of what we were proposing.
I believe specifically at the time that it was discussed, what was addressed was the fact that an unhosed short-term rental had a higher likelihood to engage town resources if there was an issue than a hosted short-term rental, so that because there is not a host on the premises, it would tap town resources more. That was at least what was discussed at the time that we looked at increasing one and not increasing the other.
Thank you for that explanation. So, is that how it stands, 150 and 600?
I believe so, in the document as we have it now, yes, sir.
Okay. But the second question I have is if the State of Vermont allows you to rent your place out for 14 or 15 days without being a short-term rental, and the ordinance requires you to register, shouldn't you have the opportunity, if you're already renting it, to someone for less than 14 days a year, that you don't have to be registered? Or, except for, like, maybe unless they have a, a non-registered fee for fire safety types of things?
If I may, I do, I do believe that within our definition, it says for a period fewer than 30 consecutive days and more than 14 days per calendar year. So, I believe that if it's 14 or fewer, it is not considered a short-term rental. Does that address your question, Mr. Zarneski?
Yes, it does. That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yep. I've extracted that language, so I want to give a beat for Preston or Kathy to correct me, cause I'm only looking at that one sentence, but I do believe within definitions, an STR means a dwelling unit rented to the transient, traveling, or vacationing public for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days and for more than 14 days per calendar year. So, if you're under 14 total days, then you're outside of the requirements of this ordinance. Is that accurate?
I just wanted to add an additional assurance to Mr. Zarneski that we are authorized to regulate short-term rentals, but the statute that authorizes it says that we can only regulate those that the state defines as a short-term rental. So, we're tied to the state definition, so that does mean, and I think we have maybe six right now that are advertising on short-term rental program platforms, I'm sorry, but are not exceeding the two weeks. And we have a few others that we've said, if we see evidence that you're exceeding the two weeks, you're going to have to sign up. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any, anything else?
No, not for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zarneski.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board regarding the document? So, we'll clean up the few little issues that we had and have it back to us next time, and hopefully it'll be a hard copy waiting for signatures.
Makes sense to me.
Sounds good for me. Alright. Next item on our agenda is to appoint our zoning administrator, Preston Bistro. Yeah, his term is expiring, and his new term would be an appointment to go till June 5, 2027. Julie, is there a document that we have to sign, or is, is a motion going to suffice in this case?
No, it's a motion, motion by the board.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Preston Bistro as zoning administrator for a three-year appointment to expire on June 5, 2027.
Second?
Leads the motion. Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on this?
Can we keep him longer?
Well, that would be up to Preston. I think it's been working out really well, the job that he's been doing for the town. When we were first looking for a zoning administrator, we were looking for someone that was a little more, I don't know if the right term is, like, business-friendly, but that was the outlook. We were trying to get to the town to try to promote more things to happen in town, and someone that was approachable and knowledgeable in the area of zoning and all the questions that come up and stuff, and I think he's done a a wonderful job in all those fields, and I think he's going to be doing a, a great job for the next three years also.
A year.
Preston, I think you're going to be signed up for another three years. Are you willing to go the route there, I, I assume?
Uh, I've been threatening to retire in the next 14 months, but Julie Shaker had...
How you have, Preston?
I have crossed the line of being a subject generic, but anyway.
I don't think that takes you out of the running, sir.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Preston Bistro for a three-year term expiring June 5, excuse me, 2027, please say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? All set. Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
We have a forest fire warden to appoint. Jeff Holden's been doing this job for forever. I don't remember ever having a, a different fire warden in town. And I believe he's going to still be on for a while. The deadline is June 28. Julie, what is this for another, is it year by year? Oh, no, okay, it is. And terminate on June 30, 2029.
Correct, and if you could make the motion tonight, I have a form that needs to be signed that I will drop off at the office tomorrow.
Alright, so we need a motion to appoint Jeffrey Holden as a town forest warden that commences, well, he is already, but July 1, 2024, and terminates on June 30, 2029.
So, moved.
Second. Leads the motion, and Tim's the second. Any discussion on this? Like I said, I think he's been the forest fire warden ever.
I was going to say, is it, is it safe to assume that Jeff is interested in the position?
Oh, yes, yes, he is. You wouldn't have it if he wasn't.
Well, I thank him for doing the job, because he gets phone calls
All the time.
All the time, different times of the day, of the week, and during holidays, and he's always there to answer it and help people out with their questions when it comes to outside burning and stuff, things like that. All those in favor of the appointment has stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you, Jeff. Next item on our agenda, I got a pile of them somewhere here, liquor licenses. So, we have a liquor license and entertainment permits. The liquor licenses, I think we just do the...
You just make motions on the liquor licenses? You just make motions on the liquor licenses, and the entertainment permits you sign, and you should've left the original entertainment permits there with the warrants.
Are they in that, is that the, is that the warrant pile?
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
I think we found them, Julie.
Okay.
Somehow we're managing to function here.
Just barely.
Just barely.
There should be two liquor licenses and two cemetery permits there, Arnie.
Yep.
And two entertainment licenses.
I just don't wanna confuse them with all my paperwork. So we have, no, we have two entertainment permits, and we have two cemetery...
Right.
Okay.
The liquor licenses just require a motion. There's no signatures on those.
So what I would entertain, a motion for application for DDL, first-class restaurant bar license. It's the Heritage Deli, Deli and Bakery Incorporated. Could we do them all at once?
Yeah, I would do them by restaurant if you go by your agenda.
Okay, all right.
You know, for Pizza Stone, you're doing the first class, third class, outside and entertainment. You could put that into one motion.
All right.
So I'll make a motion, sorry.
Uh, this one's for Heritage Deli and Bakery, and it's for, uh, first class and outside consumption.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, liquor license entertain, well, liquor license for Heritage Deli first class and outside consumption.
Is there a second?
Second?
Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the liquor license and outside consumption for Heritage Deli and Bakery Incorporated, please say aye.
Aye.
And the next one is Okemo Valley Hospitality Incorporated.
That's the first one in.
So I'll make a motion to...
Three of these. There's an outside consumption, there's a first class, and a third class.
Not entertainment?
Well, you gotta do those second separately.
Oh.
Those are signatures.
So who made the motion?
Ah, he made the motion.
And who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Tim seconded it. All those in, any discussion on those? All those in favor of approving those outside consumption, first class and third class for the Okemo Valley Hospitality Incorporated.
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next one is a tobacco license for the Dollar General, and it's just a, just a tobacco license, just that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco license permit for Dollar General.
Second?
Leads the motion. Ariana's the second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the tobacco license for Dollar General, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And the next one is a outside consumption permit, a third-class restaurant bar license, and a first-class restaurant bar license for the Pizza Stone on Pleasant Street.
So I'll make a motion to approve the permit for first class, third class, and outside consumption for Pizza Stone.
Second?
Leads the motion. Ariana's the second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the three permits, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have two entertainment permits. The first one is for the Pizza Stone, and they're looking to have live musicians, acts, and DJs, um, ten AM until twelve AM, seven days a week, which they don't, but they're applying for it all. I guess that, is that pretty much what they've always had on their, uh, on their permit?
Yes, there's no changes.
Okay. No changes on any of these?
No.
Okay. So an entertainer permit for the Pizza Stone for their application for their entertainment license.
Do we need to vote on it, or we just sign it?
You do not need to vote. It's up to you.
Okay.
But you do need to sign.
We used to, we used to do motions for everything, and now with these, we could just sign.
So I do have a question on the, on the Pizza Stone.
Sure.
So twelve AM, I mean, I don't live next door to the Pizza Stone, but I'm wondering how the neighbors feel.
Ten AM?
Twelve AM.
Twelve.
So from ten PM to twelve AM.
Ten AM to midnight.
I was, I was gonna ask that question, but I know, I'm a patron there, and they shut down by ten o'clock. And I've heard, I've heard people complaining in the Pizza Stone...
It's too early.
It's too early, and Darlene has always said, yeah, we gotta watch for our neighbors. So I, I just don't think it's been a problem.
I'm just asking a question, 'cause I don't know.
No, it's a fair question.
I've not heard anything negative, but I just was curious.
Yeah, we, we have received your complaints, Lee.
Okay, thanks.
It's anonymous.
Which was my question also, because when I saw twelve o'clock, I, I said, well, that's pretty late, and then it was seven days a week, and they're not even open seven days a week. But I guess they just want the flexibility on it. And then the question that we always ask and that we bring up, have there been any complaints? Have the policeman notified? Have there been any incidences or any, anything happening, and which would raise, uh, the discussion to bring it up again, and maybe modify things as they go along. But it seems like what Julie said and from anything we've heard, that there, there haven't been any issues. So at this point, we'll probably just leave it the way it is.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just, again, I'm just curious about what the potential ramifications were.
So when these finish gets, getting signed, put them on that warrant pile. That's that one. And as that's going down, I'll mention the next one, which is a application for an entertainment license for the Okemo Valley Hospitality. It's the Fullerton Inn. And this one must be a new one, because they have new owners, correct, Julie?
You're muted, Julie.
We can't hear you, Julie. You're muted.
Your lips are moving, but...
I'm so sick of doing remote meetings. Um, um, I don't, I think they're, they're, what they have requested in the past, it's a different owner, but, um, the Fullerton has had entertainment permits in the past.
So it's a different owner, but the same conditions?
Correct.
The same request?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
And no complaints there, I'm assuming?
No, no, no.
So I, I have a general question, Julie, for you. Is any time anyone has outdoor entertainment, do they need a permit from the town?
They, they have entertainment. Um, I think our entertainment policy, um, does say that if there's outdoor entertainment, and it's like, uh, not a private, well, not your residence. If it's a commercial business...
Business, yeah.
That is offering entertainment, then they need a permit.
Okay.
I can pull that and double-check it. It's one of those policies that was written in the eighties, and we've never looked at since, so...
Right. I just was curious.
No, uh, concerns, no questions, no issues that we've had along with the Fullerton. And this one, the hours are a little, eleven AM till nine AM.
Yeah.
Most likely Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays. And the last two things, well, it's the next agenda item, which is to sign the cemetery deeds. There's two of them, Michael A. and Joanna C. Young, and Joseph and Deborah Epler, and Stephen and Elaine Hart.
That's all you get.
Oh, I thought there were three.
No more names.
Tired. It's been a long day.
All set with the signatures, all done down there. New business, future agenda items. I see it says June nineteenth to set our municipal tax rate. Other than that, I don't see anything else on there. Is there anything that anyone would like to see? I think, possibly, well, we would definitely try to make sure, we try to get some answers for that Class Four road that Mr. Big, Big Good is discussing, and see if we could get that on there, too. Hopefully, uh, the information that we're seeking, we'll be able to get in those two weeks. Anything else from anybody that they would like, anything they would like to see on future agenda?
Can't think of anything.
All quiet for the summer.
Arnie?
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Um, when do you guys want to reschedule, uh, the board retreat? Do you wanna try to do it by another time this summer, or would you rather wait until the summer is over and maybe do something in September? It's up to you guys.
What's the consensus of the board on this?
I'd rather not do it on two, um, could do it all on the same day.
Okay.
What, what do you mean, on the same day?
Having a Wednesday morning and a Wednesday night.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Trying not to do eight hours of select board in one day.
Is the summer okay for everybody, if it ends up being in, like, in the, during the summer, or waiting till September, or...
I, if I may, I was really looking forward to it, and I think it will inform us and make us more productive. If we wait until the fall, we'll be very busy again. So you've just, we, we, we know we don't have a lot of items on the agenda. It would be great, I think, to have this retreat at this time, so that it informs what we do in the end of the year. Um, so I'm all for not doing both meetings on a Wednesday. I have a pretty difficult schedule, but if there was a day that worked for everybody, I would do whatever I can to accommodate that.
So I'll throw some days out, um, in an email, uh, to all of you, and we'll try to do it in June.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
If it ends up later, that's fine, but I just, I think it would be good for us to have this time together.
I appreciate that, Ariana, because I think it will, it'll, it'll give us more insight to the workings of the town. It'll bring us closer to the managers of the department. I think it's all positive.
That was a big part of it, too, because of new members and stuff. So, yeah, it makes sense. All right, Julie, so, you know, throw some dates out there, and we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay. I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it for anything for future agenda items, new business, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was quick. Lee, second.
Second.
Ariana, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.